All the meeting order. Your Board of Commissions recognize the importance of hearing public comments at the discretion of the Chair. Our items on the official agenda, once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall set their name and address prior to speaking. It's a role to Chair to maintain order in all public comments or discussion. This meeting is being recorded. All right, I'd ask all any members participating remotely state their name. So I know Ray, Susan. Is Vivek on? I can't see.
Yes, he is.
Okay, is there any other participants?
Patty Molino.
Oh Patty, hi, welcome, welcome Patty. Thank you, thank you for offering, by the way. And I apologize that when you were, you first offered. We came, we said the same thing you did, you were just smarter than us, I'm sorry. So it was, it was funny, so I apologize, I didn't get on to that. Earlier, but welcome, welcome to the group.
Thank you.
If you see me jumping off of sharing my screen, it's simply because this is the beginning of the meeting and I can't see the waiters in the waiting room when I'm sharing my screen. So. Don't worry, I'll be back. And I'm going to pop you over to the regular session packet now.
Okay.
Bob, if you would like.
Yes, please.
Okay. And I think just to, just to jump back and forth here for a minute, the first thing was to develop interview questions.
Yep.
And now I'm on the packet. When asked by all of you, I just feel like I need to give you a little backdrop on these documents. The, um, this was suggested by Legal. To try to get you the ability to have some non-public, non-publicized questions. So this was their suggestion, we put it in this little template to show you what that would look like. I will scroll back to this, but they also gave us categories to say, might be categories. I just shaded those out because we don't need to fill them in. It was just to merely show you the categories they may have suggested and how that situation would work if you chose to do that kind of thing. And we'll go back to this and then I had researched the questions that were used in 22. Given you some sample interview questions that Mike helped me out with regarding large utility hiring. And some questions that were used in 2003, the only one that I changed in the 2003 one. I just put a little buffer around it to make sure it was really affiliated with the job needs when you ask someone if they're willing to move and I did that solely because I just wanted to make sure whatever questions I was giving you were, were.
Yeah, no, because that, that did, that did not seem like a 2003 question.
Yeah. I, it wasn't, that was the only one, you found me out. But I just didn't want to give you a question that I, I didn't feel comfortable with you using with the laws as they are today. So I just, I tweaked that one a little bit. So I'll put you back here and Bob, all yours.
Okay. Um. Susan, can you just put it on the screen?
Oh, did I, do I not have it on the screen?
No.
Sorry, hang on just one second. Um, yep.
Okay, so we're going down through as, as we're looking at this. You know, just like I, I would say. You, you have it, you have a template, right? It's great. You have questions. As with the general manager, you take notes as, as a participant in this committee, right? Those are your notes, right? You don't have to turn those notes in on each one of the candidates, but whatever, you know, as, as we go down. We asked.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. But you know, as you, as you go down through, as long as we're, we're asking questions from that pool, Susan. If we have questions in the pool and they've been publicly advertised, I don't think we have to ask everybody the same questions, but. In general, you, I, I think as a practice, you want to, to see how people respond, but we can, we can ask. I, I think we can vary correct if we publicize them.
I'm under the understanding that you have to ask the same questions to each candidate.
Okay, nice, okay. I, I, it's a good question to ask because once we publicize them, I don't think it really matters what we ask. But we'll have to see. Any opinion?
Can do a little more research on that if you want.
Yeah, but does anybody in the group ever thought about that?
Um. I mean, I, I guess the idea of having everyone respond to the same set of questions is, is a reason we're asking the question and so we can compare answers. Uh, in terms of the candidate, but not every question we might come up with is applicable to every candidate. So I can see both sides of that. But I can see where we would have a question and then. Which we would publicize. You know, that is broad, but then in terms of the answer. We, we may have a follow-up which we, we couldn't publicize because we don't know, we wouldn't know what the follow-up is, so. As we did last time, if we go, each go around and ask a question. The opportunity to follow up on that would obviously be not a. Publicly pre-informed question because it depends on the response.
Right, right, and, and I always say in an interview, you're there to get attitude and aptitude, right? And, and that you, you, you're trying to know the candidate. And sometimes you have to dig a little deeper in order to get that, you know, that, that experience from. Okay, um, so I think if we, if we can, do you scroll down a little bit, Susan, please? So stop right there. These, these are the sample question categories, I don't think, we, we don't have to, I don't know if I would fill this out, I would just say. We, we haven't categorized the questions and into these. Categories, so. Maybe as an interviewer. Right, you could put one of the, whatever category you, you believe that the question is satisfying, right? So if you scroll down, Susan. So right there. Question one, you know, what's the time you made it happen, the completed urgent task, right, to deliver results? What challenge did you have to overcome out of this, would you relate it to being the GM? Point of that question is, right, tell me, tell me your biggest, big accomplishment, did you have a? A major outage somewhere? That, that you had to deal with, that, you know, you had no resources to handle, like, you know, Paul, Paul had mentioned that in his. Interview. Is there something that, you know? COVID type, type situation, you know, those are good, how did, how did you handle that, you know? If you have. A union workforce and they didn't want to come in and you have a 24 by seven operation, how did, how did you make it happen, right? Those are types, that's, that's a good question to get that format, you know, I, I don't know, Susan, if you were going to relate it to something above. I, I don't, I don't know how that, how that template would tie in.
So I, I, I think that just, I want to be clear about the template. I think what Legal is assuming is that you're going to come away with like seven questions or eight questions like you did in 2022. Which is this sheet right here, this was 2022 from the GM search. These are the questions they asked. They're also saying you could, in addition to that base of questions you decide on, pick. Questions and they suggested that the way to assign them without knowing what the question was, was to use a category. So I don't think we have to place these in a category, all we'd have to really do is kind of, people would know what these are, so don't, don't do something that replicates these. You know, if, if you were using these hypothetically, if you were using these seven as your main base questions. And then we were assigning each of you maybe two others that fell into some discipline that. We chose for you, whatever that was, finance and accounting or whatever. And then you would just make sure that none of your questions overlapped these and you would bring them and then they would be. Non-public, you know, before going into the interview process. I think that was the intent of the worksheet, Bob, I hope that makes it clearer because these seven really. I, I gave you a lot of stuff here, I didn't need to give you so much, but I was trying to give you some options. This was the script in 22. It might very well be the perfect script in 25 and you may use it again. What I was trying to give you with this section up here is just a way to add a couple of questions that were not going to be shared in public. That could be potentially, you know, categorized so that they could be assigned. Like, hey, hey Vivek, find us something about emergency response, you know, and bring that back to the table. That way you might have, you know, six questions from the three of you. That wouldn't be already known. And all of the rest of this is just, this was sent out in 22, it may be meaningful to you, it may be not. And these were just others that I were current in today's kind of internet world. And these were the 2003 that I brought back, may not be needed, you know, don't want to burden you too much with information. I think the most important piece here is really probably this one, which you just used in 22.
Okay, so Susan, just a question about process here. So you're saying there's seven questions or some, some number of questions that are public.
Yeah.
And then there's categories that each of us could have developed questions. That are not public. That we would then ask the same question of all candidates.
True, and you would, you, each of you would pick from your assigned category, you know, in line with your assigned category. Whatever that question was and you would not talk about it with any other members. And that is the way to not violate open meeting law and to have questions that are not public questions.
So, so, so in, in a public setting, you would discuss the category that is being assigned to one of us. But, but we would then disformulate a question that we would then ask of this, ask the same question of all candidates.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's if the, if the board chooses to do that, we're not saying that you have to do that, you could simply do the seven or eight questions that are public and leave it at that, it is up to you.
And what is the process on follow-up questions? Can follow-up questions be spontaneous questions because that's the value of.
Yes. I say yes to that, yes, I mean, if, if, if it begs another question to get to the root of what you're needing for an answer, then I would say yes.
The follow-up question is not necessarily relevant to all candidates.
Yeah. Yeah, because, yes, sorry Bob, I should let you answer that.
No, no, you, you, no, I, yeah, no, Vivek, that's the whole point, right? You're trying to get someone to expound on something and you got a question, you follow one up, you try to go down that, that vein.
Yeah, no, 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 I, you know, like, I, I, I'm just trying to do all of this under context of open meeting law, right? So it, it just complicates it for us, but, uh, so I, so I think, so Susan, we just need to be clear that we may not ask the same question of all candidates because it's a follow-up question. So, right?
Yeah, if it's because it's going to be relational to what they say to you and everyone is a unique person with unique experience. And you may need to know more about that to fully understand. Their experience, so I, yeah, follow-up questions are going to be a little different. Obviously, we want to be mindful, you know, that follow-up questions are not super difficult for one person. We, we have them do a mathematical equation and the next person we don't, you know. But it's short of that, I, I, I would follow the lead of, you know, the information you're seeking and, and I would ask the follow-up question.
So, so we, we call it a follow-up question, you're saying this is a follow-up question.
Yeah.
Then it's flagged as being something that's fine by open meeting law.
Okay.
Yeah, open meeting law really doesn't discuss it, but I think that's just the general, the general idea of interviewing people, you're gonna, you're gonna get the, try to get the information you need to make the right hire.
So. So if we could answer these questions. If we went to question one. I like question one, uh, as, you know. I think it, it, it's asking someone, you know, you know, tell, tell me a positive thing and tell you how you did it and how you delivered it, right? I think that's a good question. I'd like to keep question one. Question two. That is, what do you see is it, is one of the two major challenges, I shouldn't, we should really change that, that's RMLD. You should say, it should be more that the municipal utilities, you know, face and how would you address these challenges? You know, right now you have state mandated. Targets that you have to meet, you know, how, you know, I'm, I'm not going to feed this to them, but they should be able to answer that. They should be understanding, you know, how are they going to make that possible? So I'd like to reword that. Whatever they see as the challenges, you know, you know, balancing the, how much rate payers have to pay to meet decarbonization costs, you know. I, I, I'd like to hear a response, something similar to that. Or, you know, if somebody has a different idea, that, you know, that, that's fine, but I would just change that slightly, Susan.
Okay. Any other input on that from anyone else or?
No, I, I like the question that you're making it broad instead of RMLD, to me. We care about RMLD, I really don't care what you would do for another utility, but that's fine, the wording will get us to the same place.
Okay.
So. But.
I was just going to ask if you were going to go down through the list or?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
The question three I want to change. Describe your day. At your current job, that's more. You know, I, what I'd like to ask. Is a very specific question. Surrounding. Union management, union. Contract negotiations, right? It's very, very important. That the general manager understands that, that probably one of the toughest things you do as a general manager. And what is your approach, what is your mindset? We need a question that is going to open up a discussion regarding union and management negotiations, right? It can be very contentious, they can result in, 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 in all sorts of different things. You know, you know, right now RMLD is in the middle of three of them, right? And they're overdue, so it's going to become one of the critical. Items for the next general manager, so I want, I want to formulate a question. That's going to extract a. A response out of them and I want it to be a very, if, if the right word is, you know, emotional response. We really have to dig in on that and how this new GM would handle those negotiations. That's, that's probably the most, one, I think, one of our most imperative things for this next general manager, because that has to get done.
So I would shape a question like, I would give him the premise, so RMLD is a union-run utility. Explain your experience in working with. Union organizations. Contract negotiations and then operation post-contract or something like that.
Yep, yep. But.
Because actually, then, you know, items number, questions four and five to some extent cover some of those aspects, but yeah.
Yep, no, you, you really, you have to, you have to dig in on their skills and their, their, that person's mindset and how they're going to do it. I, so I like the way you started, you know, the. You know, RMLD is a, a, a union-based organization. You know, currently RMLD is in, is in. Contract negotiations with its, with its union workforce. Please describe your philosophy and experience in dealing. With contract negotiations that, that. May, may. That. Require remediation. Because that's exactly where we're at.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Did you get that, the chance?
Bob, might I point one thing out as well? It's just, I think, important as you go through this, depending on the candidate pool, obviously. Um, you may have a lot of people with this type of experience and you may not. And I just, I want everybody to just consider, we do use outside counsel, they are involved at every meeting. There is a scenario where someone can be supported in a way that they need to be. And I think part of that question maybe Bob could be finding out how much support they think they need, would need to be effective in that role. Because it is supported by Legal.
Yeah, no, no, it is, but yeah, it's, but it's driven by.
Yep.
Yeah, right, and whoever that may be. So that is, that is, that is true, you get support, someone's, someone's with you, but you know, I, I think. That's a big portion, right? I think it's very, very important that they be able to answer that and that they come in and say, I don't know, but. How to do it, but as long as they're able to answer the question, say, or I'd use the resources that I can find, right? But, okay, so then. If you could change that, something, question like that, Susan, if you could come back to us.
Yep.
Right?
Sure.
Replace question three, question four, talent acquisition, inspire you and all employees to ensure that they feel values and, and work as a team. What sets you for, to ensure the best hires fill vacancies? How do you incentivize talent to stay? So. That. You know. More of an HR question, it's multi-layered. But, you know, you're. You're trying to make sure, and again, it's, it, we're 95% union-based organization. I, I don't know. If we want to keep this question per se or change it out. It's more of a talent recruitment, which what you do, Susan.
Yes. And I see what you're saying because the limitations within union contracts. You can have the greatest ideas in the world and if they don't abide by the union contract, you're not doing them.
Yes. Yeah.
This could be a question.
But retaining staff, Bob, has been a big issue, right, till recently?
I think firing staff was a big issue, Vivek. So. So I think this. Talent acquisition, I mean, I mean, it's, it's a, we could keep it if we'd like, but I'm, I'm open to rewording this based on everyone's input.
I think we've got multiple, I think, see we have multiple questions in here and I, I think some of them are redundant, but. I, I think the premise is getting good people and keeping good people is important. And so that's the premise for sentences, a statement, which is fine. And the second statement is really talking about team building and. I don't know how. That is limited. By union contracts. See, the, the last question I think is redundant, I don't think we need that question at all. And, and maybe the, the middle question there can be modified, but I think. I, I think. The essence of I see it is team building, it's been a lot of disruption, I think, and. And having someone come in and ask the question, how are you going to build a team, keep talent and, and make people feel comfortable here is, is a valid one.
Actually, if you don't mind, Patty, I'd like to get your thoughts on what would be a good question here for.
For question four?
Yeah.
What are the questions again?
Well, I like the first statement and I like the second question and I think. I don't know, you could modify, like, I, I don't think we need to fill vacancies, I, I don't think that's important right now. Or how do you incentivize talents to stay? Because if, if you're talking about how do you inspire your employees to ensure they feel valued, I think that's important.
Yeah, I agree, Patty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll focus this question, I'll draft a new one if you want, with more of an eye towards team building and making employees feel valued and how someone new is going to do those things.
Yeah, I think the first two sentences get close to that. Taking Patty's input, just maybe the second two questions may not be. As important.
Yeah, so just can the second half of the two, two, keep the first two statements, can the second part, second two statements? Easy enough. All right. All right, question five, how effect the culture change in an organization, now you see relationship between GM and the health, and healthy company culture. How can you support a commission to support a positive company culture within the four towns serviced by the RMLD? I like that question because it kind of gets into the. Team building aspect and. That, you know, what, what is, what is the GM's plan for, for moving, moving the organization forward? Right, so. I would opt to keep this question, I, I wouldn't have any input on that.
Yeah, I, I, while I, while I agree with your comment, Bob, I, I think this question is a little bit confused in terms of. In part, there's a question about the GM leading the company culture, but then there's also the question of relationship with the Board of Commissioners and the four towns. So. Are we trying to get to how does the GM work with the Board of Commissioners and the Ford and the cab? To build the culture or I, I, I feel like there's two directions here and. While I. Would like to see him or her, the candidate. Have an answer for it, I'm a little confused by the question.
You know, it starts off by talking about culture change. And. You know, the question is, you know, maybe the culture doesn't need to be changed, so, so, you know, you don't necessarily have to suppose that you need a culture change in any organization, just because you have a new person coming in.
Yeah, that's a good, good point, Vivek, take the word, we'll, we'll strike the word change. Culture in an organization.
How do you influence culture in an organization, I think that's a better question.
I agree. And then. I see relationship with GM and a, and a healthy company, a GM and. I think the second part was to see, you know, what's your, what's kind of your philosophy, you know, I say, you do. Is it collaborative? Is it? You know, I'm, I'm a very team-oriented person, I. I like a group think and that, you know, I, or, you know, I'm autonomous, I let people do their jobs and I, and I, you know, talk to the director, yeah, I want to have some understanding of what their management style is. And then also, you know, what you're going to be, your interaction with the Board of Commissioners, you know, are they going, you know, are they going to be willing to take direction from the, the Board of Commissioners, right? That's, that's a very, and, and the cab, you know, that's an important. Part of the job.
Yeah, I, I accept Bob's added to the first question, I would suggest we drop the middle question and just go right into how can the Board of Commissioners support company change with? And I would. I, I would include the Commissioners and the cab to support property culture change.
Yeah.
If we phrase it differently, but yeah, just those two questions, I think the middle one is, is, is where my confusion was coming from.
Okay.
Can I, can I get clarity on the, how would the, the Board of Commissioners and the cab support company culture, change in company culture? Positive influence in company culture, but where does that four towns piece come in and how do you see, what question are you asking?
And the cab.
Yes, and the cab I have, but I, I guess I'm sort of looking at the culture question as internal, external, what is external company culture? Toward four towns look like? What is, I'm trying to figure out what activity we're talking about there.
Well, I think we're internal, I don't think we are internal, I think that was, I don't think that we're talking here about. I, I think that the four towns serviced by RMLD is an awkward reference to the cab.
Yeah, no, no, but, but Bob, I think, sorry, I think when you're supporting. Four towns, basically you're saying you're supporting your customers wherever they are, right? So.
That's a different question though. So I think to, to.
No, no, so, so my point is that I think you could just say, how can the border commissioners and cab support a positive culture?
Correct.
Just, and then just, and just, just at that, so, so, yeah.
Yeah, right.
You don't need to, you don't need the, the extra words on that.
Yeah.
Correct. And I mean, there may be a question about how we want RMLD to interact with. Its customers and, and the towns, but that's a different question.
Yep.
Yeah, maybe that's it. Maybe that's the que- maybe that's the question we want to ask there, right? How we interact with, you know, how, how do you plan to interact with the board of commissioners, the cab? And the four towns served by the RMLD? You know, what, what is your plan of action, right? Maybe.
No, I, I, I think, I, I, I disagree there, Bob. I don't want to. The four, the representatives of four towns, for this question to build company culture is through the cab. There'd be another question in terms of outreach and, and beyond. That, that's not this question.
Okay, yeah, so, so, so the question can be, how can the border commissioners and cab support a positive company culture? Stop right there.
Right, yeah, okay. All right, we'll onto the next one. Uh, question six. Is in a managerial role, we must do tough things. Tell us about a terrible situation. Tell us about terrible situations. Yeah, okay, which is fine. What are popular decisions that you have to make? Explain the situations in detail and how you dealt with it, right? Okay, um, we're, you know. Yep, okay, whatever that scenario comes up, whether it's, uh. You know, I keep people on board, cancel vacations, I gotta, uh, tell you, you know, you, you're working for free. You know, it's what, whatever, you know, whatever it is, you know, uh, there's a million, million, gotta, I gotta let you go. Uh, I gotta downsize, you know, um, we've got a, you know, the, the, terrible, terrible thing. I've got to, you know, change the price. I gotta cut the contract, right? Whatever it is, you know, I want to, you want to hear about those. And how painful, you, you want to hear about good things, but at the same time, you want to get. How do you handle adversity, right? Because jobs have adversity and they all do. And you want to know how, how was it handled? Was it handed, handled professionally? Was it handled, um, promptly? Was it handled, you know, okay, you gotta do what you have to do and the decision was made and you execute that decision, you know, I, those are very important things. And then, uh. Is, is everybody okay with that question?
Yeah, I like the question. It, 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 it would be interesting to see how candidates respond. It, it's a challenge. I, I like it.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I like the spirit of the question, Bob. The only thing is, I'm just sensitive to the word terrible situations. I would just say, tell us about difficult situations.
Okay, that's a good one. That, that's a, okay, that, that fine edit, Vivek.
Difficult instead of terrible. Okay, got it.
And, and then the last question is basically sell yourself, right? And, and I think that's, that's, it's important. For someone to come back, you know, come out and tell you why they believe that they are the best candidate for the job. And there's, you know, some narrative behind it. And, you know, not say just cuz, right? What, you know, I mean. You need some, some reasoning why you believe that you have that self-confidence to, to. You know, have this position. So I, I, I do like that question, um. Um, I, I, I don't know about you folks, if it's be a or nay.
No, I, I, I like that question too. It, 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 it tells us what the person believes is their strongest point. Now, we may agree that that strong point may not be the one that's most important to us, but. Like to hear what they feel is their main strength.
No, it's, it's a good question. Um, I always like to have such questions included. Um, yeah.
Okay, now, would there be any other questions? I, I don't know, uh, Patty or Ray, Vivek. Would anything else you would think you would want to include? In like I would call the main body of questions?
Patty?
Yeah, I'm good. I, I like this set of questions. I think you're gonna dig deep enough.
Okay. So, so, so Bob, I, the way I, you know, I looked at this was like. Rather than looking at these seven questions. Like there were certain ways I would cover my interview.
Okay.
And one thing, if I'm looking at these questions, one thing I don't think we are spending enough time on is domain knowledge.
Okay.
So I, I, I'm just raising that as a flag.
Yep.
Because, you know, maybe the last question addresses it. But, you know, what do you really know about this business? It's not like what are the challenges facing the thing? What do you know about the business? And that is something that should come out. I don't know how to ask that question. So, 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 so the, the, the way I, if you can humor me, you know. The way I would categorize questions rather than these seven ways would be, how do we explore domain knowledge? Then the next one is how do they manage people? How do they, the second another area is how do they manage operations and budgets?
Oh, yeah.
How do they deal with surprises and challenges? And so some of that is covered, but. So, you know, there's too many questions on people and not on some of these other things, so.
Excellent. I, 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 I love it. So when we come in, at the very beginning, I, I think the most important take, to your point, Vivek. Is, yeah, tell me, tell me about your, you, you and your work experience, right? We should be able to.
Yeah, tell me about yourself. What, what, what is it about you that we need to know?
Yeah, tell me about your work experience relate, and as it would relate to the municipal public power environment.
Yes.
Okay, maybe that's a statement, Susan, that we could add at the very beginning.
Yep, that's very often the way we start an interview is tell us how, about yourself and how you got here kind of thing. But I like your public power and, um. Utility experience.
Applications from people who don't have public power experience.
Yeah. Okay.
Oh, sorry, Susan.
That's okay. Nope, I'm good.
Uh, Vivek, I also liked your, um, statement regarding, um. You know, budget building, you know, and, and operations, you know, what, you know, what, we, we, we should have a. Budgetary slash operational type question, you know, how do you see? You know, it, it, you know, what is your skillset, you know, when it comes to?
No, no, so that's why I could, I could repeat the questions if you want. Domain knowledge is the first one, right?
Yeah.
Then this, this next one is how do you manage operations and budgets? How do you manage people? Then how do you deal with surprises and challenges?
Yeah, uh, uh, so, uh, so we should. Now we have, we're gonna have a union-based question and a union.
No, no, absolutely. No, so you'll have a union-based, but it could be under that. So, so it's like a follow-up. So like the operations category will be operations questions. Managing people would be. Uh, how do you deal with unions? How do you deal with motivation? All those, you know, those are all subcategories of managing people.
Yeah, yeah. So the way I react to Vivek's questions is, is he has four questions, two of which I, the last two, I think we have addressed in these. Seven questions, but I think the question of operating, managing, um. Budget, uh, and I'm almost willing to accept exactly how Vivek phrased it. Manage operations and budgets, um, should be. You know, could be added to this base of questions almost as he read it. Read that second one again, Vivek.
So the first question was domain knowledge.
The second, 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 second question.
Second was how do you manage operations and budgets? I mean, that's where you can explore reliability, safety.
Yeah, so I, I would like to build that up. Yeah, I, I like that. I, I would just. Yes, I like that question. Maybe we can expand on a little bit, but I would like to add something like that to this list of seven.
Yeah, well, we, we got, we got rid of question three anyway. Describe your typical workday.
Yeah.
Why don't we put it in there?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, so, so you're, so basically I'm creating categories, right? So like you have, uh, four and five here are like how you manage people. So, so those come under managing people. Right? So domain and, uh, question one and two address the domain no- knowledge, right? Like, so I, question one is like, you know, tell me about yourself, right?
Yeah.
And, and tell me about yourself and what do you know about utilities, right? I mean, that, that's, that's, that's really domain knowledge.
Yeah. So I, I agree. Let's swap out the, the question three that we dropped and, and put in a question about how do you? Manage operations and budget in a challenging energy.
Di- dynamic.
Dynamic.
Dynamic energy.
Dynamic, yeah.
Follow-up, there could, there, there could be questions related to, you know, peak load management and all those kind of things.
Well, that's, that would be his response. Yeah, absolutely. It should ought to be his response. Yeah.
Dynamic energy environment?
Yeah.
It, 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 industry.
Industry.
Okay, energy, environment, industry.
Either, either one.
Either one, yeah. Any word?
Can I ask one question of the chair? Bob, are you considering, so just so. I'm clear, if we add questions to this, that's an opportunity to do the non-public questions. Are we going away from that and just doing all the questions publicly? I just want us to be thinking about that as we discuss those other, because we, we are categorizing them right now, sort of saying that these are on finance and budgeting and. These might be on, you know, skillset, um, beyond, you know, expertise, technical expertise. Do we want to consider doing those questions outside of this list or not?
No, I, 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 I think. That will add Vivek's question as question three. And then, and then if we, if we have a sub-question, that, something that you would find very, you know, important. To you, that you think, believe is an important question, then, then we can add, we can, that would be a question we can add post. And under, under, under a, a, another category, whatever, whatever you believe it is. But I'd, I'd like to add that to the main body and not keep it as a separate.
Yep, so we're gonna add number three and we'll discuss further sub-questions.
Yeah, yeah, if anybody has a, a question that they want to develop, it's just, you know, again, on, you know, as you. What, because once you ask it, well, you know, obviously it'll be public, I. I, I, I know we have to, you know, the whole point here is to be o- as open as possible about what we're, we're going to ask, but. You know, again, in an interview, if you're going to ask a, a question. Um, you know, just think about what it is. Take it, take it from the lower part of. The, um, information you handed out, there's some good questions and like, you know, is it? Would it be a character question, a domain question, um, functional question, you know, uh. Your decision-making question, you know, what, whatever category you want to put it in, just, just feel free to ask it. To the whole point. Okay, uh, so we got through those, I believe soon, if you could retype them, redistribute them.
Yep, surely.
Uh, we have, um. Uh, let's just get, can, can everyone continue for, I'm just gonna look right now. Next week at the same time, is that possible?
You still have the executive session going on next and, yep, okay. Bob, can I clarify one thing? We're replacing question three and then we have question, a question eight that might be about exploring. Domain knowledge, is that correct?
Yeah, but that becomes question one effectively.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so the opening, I gotcha. All right, so that one's covered by one, so we're still at seven questions with the opening. All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, um, so for next week, excuse me, the thirteenth, I could not do, uh, this time. I could do, um, a more of an evening. Either we could do in-person or virtual meeting again. I don't know what, what works better for everybody, but I, I cannot do the same time next week.
Yeah, I can't either. I'm traveling next week, so I will be in Louisville. Through Thursday, but I could do an evening, because that would be, I wouldn't be in the, with client.
Okay, what would be your better, uh, timeframe and evening, right? Could you do Wednesday evening?
I could do Wednesday evening.
I'll make it work. What, what time do you want?
Um, would you, would you like to do, uh, five? Six, I'm, I'm open to either.
Five works, five works.
Five work, Patty, is, was that a convenient time for you?
Fine.
Okay.
Yeah, five on Friday, uh, Wednesday, the thirteenth would work for me.
Would you like to do it in person or online?
Online.
Online, yeah, because.
Yeah, I'm not coming. Yeah, I'm in Louisville, Kentucky.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So I, I won't be, uh, I won't be coming in, in person.
Okay. Um, okay, so that's, that's our, our next scheduled meeting.
So sorry to interrupt. The thirteenth actually is, um, on hold right now for a different meeting, so in the evening. It could be before that regular meeting, um, at like five maybe, or a different day would be ideal.
We have it at five.
We're doing it at five.
You think it'll be an hour?
Yeah.
So I have the other, I have the regular meeting at six.
On the thirteenth? Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to.
Thanks, Erica.
Okay, all right, thanks. I, I know, we should be good. Those would be questions, reprint them. Okay, let's close this meeting and open the executives.
Yeah.
You have the motion, right?
Can you share like a Word document or something so we could make edits and share with you?
Make edits to the.
To the, the questions, because I think you sent like a copy of, like, you do like a image file that you sent.
Sure, I can, I can send you that unless you just want, I'll, when I send it out draft, I'll send it in Word, that's fine. And Bob, you have the suggested motion to read on the screen, I think.
Okay, suggestion motion that RMLD gentleman, just first committee going to executive. Session to consider applicants by reviewing resumes and criteria for the general manager position and return to the regular session for sole purpose of adjournment. All those in favor? Second, all those in favor?
Uh, I, Ray, I.
Vivek, Sonya, I.
Patty, you have to say, uh, you have to say your name and say aye.
Patty, we know aye.
All right, Bob called her aye. Okay, hey, great. Okay, now we'll go to the other executive session.
Okay, just give me two minutes. I'm gonna pull things up and then I'll let you all in, okay?
Okay, thank you.